Miami City School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. Full room. We don't have that too often. Can I get a roll call, please, Mr. Wells? Mr. Ambler?
Here.
Mr. Dattler?
Here.
Mrs. Gettler?
Here.
Mr. Maury?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Ms. Chapman? Mr. Hellman?
Here.
Ms. Maney?
Here.
And Mr. Wells is here. Okay, we're gonna start off with a meeting opening items. Do I have a motion to approve opening items C through G?
So move.
First by Jason, second by Nylott. We will start at the top. First item is adoption of the agenda. Second item is D, waiving of the reading of the minutes. Item E is the approval of the minutes for the special board meeting that was held last night. These are all typical procedures. Item F would be approval of financial reports. Do we have any comments on that, Mr. Wells?
No, I just encourage everyone, especially for everybody in the audience, feel free to go to our website under Board Docs and you can read the Treasuries Report. I won't go into that at this time.
Thank you. Next, we have recognition of citizens, staff, and students. We would like to recognize National Custodian Day. National Custodian Day is October 2, 2025. They work while we sleep, sometimes we walk around them in the halls, not always seeing them and their work as important. That's why we celebrate National Custodian Day, which rolls around every October 2. It recognizes the hard work that it takes to keep the public facilities in tip-top shape, as well as the people who diligently work to make sure we have schools and workplaces that are spotless and sanitary. Custodians are the first line of defense of the war on germs. It is a thankless task. National Custodian Day shows appreciation of custodians who clean the offices, office buildings, and schools. Thank you to all the hard-working custodians that we have to keep our facilities nice, clean, and beautiful. Next, we would like to recognize Fire Prevention Week. Next month, our buildings will participate in Fire Prevention Week. Since 1922, the NFPA has sponsored the public observance of Fire Prevention Week. In 1925, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed Fire Prevention Week a national observance, making it the longest-running public health observance in our country. During Fire Prevention Week, children, adults, and teachers learn how to stay safe in case of a fire. Firefighters provide life, saving public education in an effort to drastically decrease casualties caused by fires. This year's theme is "Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries In Your Home." Fire Prevention Week is observed October 5 through 11, 2025, and will educate everyone on using these batteries safely. The campaign stresses how important it is to buy, charge, and recycle safely. Our district appreciates and would like to thank the men and women who served as part of our Miami Valley Fire District and the surrounding districts. Thank you to all our firefighters that keep us safe. The lithium-ion batteries is a serious thing that causes lots of problems. That puts us to the end of that. Do I... Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Ambler? Yes. Mr. Dattler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
All right, next, we are on to public comments. Once again, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. Before we begin public comments, I just want to acknowledge that everybody up here has received all the emails, phone calls, everything that's been pouring into everybody here. So we have read them. At one point, I was trying to respond. I think most of us were. I think it's been an overwhelming task to try to do that at this point. So thank you so much for, you know, sending us your thoughts. Just to ensure a respectful process, please note that the public comment is limited to 30 minutes. We ask that all speakers remain respectful and consider both sides of the situation, allowing each side an opportunity to be heard. So... And I just would like to note, I think there's a perception out there that, for whatever reason, we are voting on something tonight on these matters, and that that's not the case. There's an ongoing investigation going on. And I am going to apologize now if I miss say your name on the sheet that you provided. I will go on with reading our statement. Each person who wishes to address the board shall complete the form prior to beginning of the meeting. Commenters will give his/her name and address. Each person is allotted three minutes to speak, the first 15 minutes only. Public participation be allotted for public comments concerning agenda items. An additional 15 minutes for discussion of other topics will be... Will provide a total of 30 minutes for public comments. We will give a 30-second warning to speakers. Know when their 30 minutes is up. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole, consistent with our policy. This is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. As a reminder, our expectation tonight is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. We will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements. If there's any of that, we will adjourn the meeting. So we will allow all 30 minutes to be, you know, comments of the topic at hand, not just to be board items. First person up is Peter Leylich. I'm sorry if I said... Yep, we have three minutes, and you'll get a 30-second warning when your three minutes is up. You don't have to take your full three minutes. We'd like to try not to be repetitive over and over and give everybody an opportunity. If you feel like you're gonna be echoing the person in front of you, you know, we ask that just be considerate, trying to give everybody an opportunity here.
My name is Peter Leylich. I'm a student of the Miami City High School marching band, and I'm here today to speak about Mr. Aylward. And during eighth grade, I was on a vacation trip during my marching band year, and it really... I struggled a lot getting into marching band because I didn't know what I was doing, and I felt that I wasn't good enough, as good as everybody else was. And with Aylward, he was always there for me if I needed anything. He always helped me when I needed to know how to march or how to play certain high notes. And with people that were a lot better than I was, I didn't feel like I could perform with them. So I really struggled with quitting, and I really struggled mentally without Aylward. But then, when Aylward was there for me, you know, I was just able to focus a lot more. I was able to perform better, and I am able to do solo and ensemble with Class A solos and Class A ensembles. And without Aylward, I wouldn't be where I am today, and I probably wouldn't be versing my band career.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Brooklyn Miller.
Hello, I'm a student... I'm also a student at the Miami City High School. I'd like to provide a different perspective on the Aylward situation going on right now regarding the facts of the case, and also I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to be up here today. So after the assassination, it is a fact that Steve Aylward made a post on his Facebook profile condemning the action, calling it unconscionable, along with all gun violence, and that it is time to finally do something about guns. In the comments of this post, Doug Brown began discussing the Democratic Party's call for violence against Republicans, and Mr. Aylward rebutted that this call for violence by Democrats is not happening, but rather that Kirk had been calling for this. Katie Aylward, Mr. Aylward's wife, replied with a well-documented quote from Mr. Kirk in April of 2023, in which Mr. Kirk states that it is worth it to have the cost of, unfortunately, some gun deaths every single year so that we can have the Second Amendment. This quote by Mr. Kirk is what Mr. Aylward was referring to when he stated that Charlie Kirk had been calling for this, this being, in Mr. Aylward's exact words, gun violence. Mr. Aylward clarified this fact, and his subsequent comment condemned Mr. Kirk's assassination a second time and expressed his condolences to the Kirk family. Mr. Aylward's comment on Mr. Kirk calling for this was eventually taken out of context on social media, allowing it to be presented in a way that made Mr. Aylward seem as though he, as stated by Haley Captain, starter of a campaign in favor of Aylward's removal, is okay with people getting assassinated just because he doesn't share the same views as him. Never did Mr. Aylward state or even imply anything along those lines, as once again, his comment of Mr. Kirk calling for this was referring to violence and gun deaths, as Mr. Kirk has openly stated his approval of, and Mr. Aylward condemned Mr. Kirk's assassination multiple times. This out-of-context betrayal of Mr. Aylward's quote caused people to make wrong assumptions without any prior or subsequent context. Pardon me. The misinformation and assumptions made on the nature of what Mr. Aylward said is why we are here today, not because Mr. Aylward is okay with people getting assassinated just because he doesn't share the same views as him. There are now concerns that Mr. Aylward forces his wrongful and incorrect belief onto his students, but my... But myself, many Miami City Band members and alumni can agree that he makes it a point to never bring politics into his classroom and treats those with all beliefs equally. Mr. Aylward's comment was made on his personal Facebook profile and has never pushed any political beliefs onto his students. If parents are concerned that he is indoctrinating his students, they are sorely mistaken and can rest assured that the issue of politics will not and has never presented itself into Mr. Aylward's teachings.
30 seconds left.
If he has disreputed the school in the eyes of the community, it is due to incorrect assumptions made from a lack of context surrounding his words. Thank you.
Next, we have Laura Kinner.
Hi, I'm Laura Kinner. I'm here to speak for my granddaughters, Cadence Hackward and Addison Hackward, and they helped write this. How can I put 23 years into three minutes? The kids got 2,500-plus and counting signatures on the petition they started. That's how many people have signed the petition to keep Mr. Aylward. There are less than 2,000 students at our high school. To say that Aylward has impacted the whole school would be an understatement. Not only has he helped the kids at our school, he has also impacted our whole community. He has connected and loved and inspired so many of our children and shows them what it is like to have family. He shows all of our kids their true potentials and believes in them every step of the way, and not once does he ever let any of them believe they aren't good enough to do something. Aylward has always been there for our kids, even when some of us couldn't. To fire him would be showing our children that no matter how good a person you are, it will get you nowhere if you don't believe in the same ideas as everyone else. It would show them that freedom of speech doesn't exist anymore. I'm not here to talk politics or to pick sides on who said what. I'm here to prove what a good teacher Stephen Aylward is, no matter what his beliefs are. I am here to help the man that helped all our children, thousands of children over the years, and inspired them when even we couldn't do that. Aylward loves our community, and we love him too. But right now, we are failing him, so let's fix that. Thank you.
Next, we have Austin Brown.
Hello, my name is Austin Brown, and I am a senior at the high school. I've spent more than 1,142 hours doing marching bands under Aylward's direction. And though some of those days have been hard and more than 150 of us are ready to quit, Mr. Aylward has always been there to lift us up. He has always made me feel comfortable and has made a safe and inclusive family out of everyone in the band. No matter your identity, your ability, or disability, or your physicality, Aylward is always there to push us to our greatest potential. Because some random people on the internet who don't even know him are blaming not only his reputation, but also the band for speaking his opinion. As he and many other people on the internet have said, no one should be threatened or killed for their beliefs. But for some people hiding behind a screen, those words only apply to the people who have the same views as them. Mr. Aylward has been doxxed, his phone number has been released, his family has received death threats. They called him a pedophile, and people say that he is indoctrinating the kids he worked with. Let me make myself clear. Mr. Aylward has never spoken about politics in the classroom, and yet people continue to make assumptions based on the pronouns in his bio, which, by the way, everyone has pronouns, whether you like it or not. We learn about them in elementary school. Aylward has always made a safe and open space for kids to express themselves freely, something that many kids don't feel at home. Over the many football games I've been to in band, I've heard football coaches yelling and cursing at kids. Also, over those many football games, at least half of them they lost, and I think that says a lot about the coaching. Not trying to hate, just seeing what I have observed. Aylward has not done that in the five years I've been there. He has made a home away from home, a family as a kid who wouldn't have interacted without him. The marching band has given me many lifelong friendships, and that wouldn't have been possible without him. Being one of the most accomplished sports in the school and one of the best marching bands in the state doesn't happen without an innovation leader. So please, if you really care about the students, listen to the children who have been around Mr. Aylward and the more than 2,000 people who have signed that petition, and not the hateful people who cower behind their phones. In the band, we have the saying, always, everybody, all the time, meaning that everyone has a job to do, and they must do it to the fullest extent, and Mr. Aylward always gets us to the finish line.
Next, we have Kim Eversol.
Good evening, Miami City Council.
Hello.
School board. Today, I would like to discuss the jobs that are being threatened for Rachel O'Connor and Steve Aylward. Rachel O'Connor was my sophomore U.S. history teacher. This was during 2021. She asked us to look into the news, write a paper. I did concerning the Israeli-Palestinian conflict, something I have a more progressive feeling on, and she challenged me in class in my beliefs. She is not a biased person. Her job is to talk about the United States and global history, and she has always promoted critical thinking. I'm not here to talk about Charlie Kirk. No one cares about my opinion, and I don't really care about anyone else's opinion. But no one is here to say he deserved to be assassinated, or that he or conservatives deserve to be wiped off the face of the earth. Our problems with him weren't about taxes or walls. It was about quotes like, "If I see a black pilot, I'm going to be like, boy, I hope he's qualified," and happening all the time in urban America, prowling blacks go around for fun to go target white people. That's a fact. It's happening more and more. He was a hateful human being. Aylward, I worked with under four years in his band, and listen, me and him are both loud people. We butted heads all the time, but there is no one in this school who cared about his students more than Stephen Aylward. He had a saying, "Pressure is a privilege," and I ask all you board members, you have a privilege. Protect Miami City. Think about the students, whether their identity, their sexuality, for the safe space that Aylward built. Don't take that away because neo-Nazis on Twitter told you to. I yield the floor.
Next, we have Avery Archer.
Pass, polite pass.
Thank you. Next, we have Bryson Viken.
Hello, board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am here today to talk about the Stephen Aylward board situation. As a student under the Miami City Marching Band program and under his direction, I've been doing this since about... For about three years now, and never once I can recall him bringing politics into his classroom, nor trying to influence us in any sort of way about our political beliefs. He creates an amazing safe space for all of us, no matter what, and he always tries to push us toward the fullest potential. And getting rid of him would be getting rid of that and making a unsafe space to say for the students, making a place where they don't feel as comfortable, a place where they just don't have a home at school. And taking that away would be taking away so much from the children at the high school and especially in the band program. And I would also like to add that I know of multiple other teachers that do talk about politics in the classroom and do somewhat influence the children's minds. And yet, the fact that Stephen Aylward made one comment that was taken out of context, and this is where he is, it just makes me feel concerned about what about the other teachers that actually do try and influence the children. That's all I have to say for now. Thank you for letting me speak.
Next, we have Frankie Johnson.
Since the beginning of this marching band season, on July 14th, 2025, I have spent 209 hours on the field under the direction of Stephen Aylward, not counting all of the things that we have done that was undocumented on our weekly schedule. Not only that, but I spend three class periods a day at school in his classroom and his presence. Never once has he ever shared anything political to his students. Never once have I ever heard him make any reference to political parties to his students. He refuses to let anyone who is under 18 or still under his teaching bring him or follow him anywhere on social media, and he is being attacked and victimized online by ignorant people. In the conflict happening online, people claim Mr. Aylward made violent declarations of the assassination of Charlie Kirk. However, this is not true. The things Mr. Aylward posted were strictly against violence, spreading knowledge on the school shooting that happened just before the assassination, as well as speaking on gun violence in general. He also expressed how people on the left who are more empathetic with the assassination of Charlie Kirk, but people on the right have been left-wing parties for many years now. None of the things he said goes against the teacher's code of conduct. It states that teachers cannot speak online about the district, however, can speak on world events. Not once in either post did he say anything violent or anything untrue. He has been a victim in a situation he has no control over. His family and people I know personally are being put in danger and being sent death threats for spreading awareness and expressing his thoughts on the world situation, like many others online. The cement does not discharge a loser's job over this, especially having changed lives with so many sitting in this room. By firing Mr. Aylward, you would be giving power to people online who are trying to do nothing but ruin innocent lives. Mr. Aylward has created an environment in the band where people are willing, not only willing, but excited for all the time we spend at a band event. There is a family created, and we have taken away the most influential role model that we have, pardon me. I would have quit last year at one of the most awful periods of my life, but the environment has created enough care he gave me from any time spent on the field or on the charts of release. He created a time where students can be happy and be a community. There are many different students under his care with many different beliefs, and he treats us all with the exact same respect and care enough to where we all stand behind him. His family is being sent death threats. His address and full name has been released to the public, and he is being harassed even more now. With his address being out online, his children are being put in danger. His wife is being put in danger. His teacher shared his personal belief on his own time, and because of that, his family are being put in possible danger. His life is being destroyed and is completely uncalled for and unconstitutional.
30 seconds left. Next, we have Linda Moody.
All forms of gun violence are unacceptable, and what happened to Charlie Kirk today was unconscionable. These are the first words Mr. Aylward wrote on his Facebook post, the same post that people are claiming he celebrated and called for Charlie's death. One comment in the comment thread is the only thing that was shared, is taken out of context for the purpose of targeting Mr. Aylward for his difference in opinion. It is important to note that one of the first sources of this false narrative was made by a political commentator who lives in an entirely other state and purposefully tries to target people simply for having different beliefs. I am a 2011 Miami City graduate, and I had the pleasure of having Mr. Aylward as my band director for six years of middle school and high school. Concert band, pet band, and marching band were my life at that age, and Mr. Aylward helped shape who I am today. He was always careful not to talk politics around the students and made it very clear that he would not accept friend requests until after we graduated. When John McCain was running for president, we were invited to a rally at Wright State. Mr. Aylward knew it would be a good experience for us and good exposure for the band. Even then, he made sure when we were not aware of how he felt of the candidate we were there to see. To this day, I attribute the event to sparking my interest in politics. He wanted to make sure to remain unbiased and make sure he fostered an environment of inclusion and acceptance of all, and that he did. I have watched the band grow and thrive under his direction. He brought students from all walks of life together and encouraged us to be friends. In fact, he has received some awards and honors in recent times for his inclusion efforts with the band. I'm not sure if the district has a social media policy or what it may entail, but from my experience, businesses do not do a good job of teaching us their expectations around our personal social media. It is also important to note that some other teachers and even some members of this board have made political statements about recent events on their own social medias that anybody in the public can see due to their lack of privacy settings on such posts. If you believe he needs discipline, please do something other than terminating his employment. I believe he will accept that and make sure when he returns to his students, he learns from this experience. In fact, this would be an excellent learning opportunity for all, and I believe the district should use this as an opportunity to go over their social media policy and make sure all employees of the district are well aware of the expectations and consequences of breaking it. There's a petition that has been signed by community members of past and present who have all been positively affected by Mr. Aylward. Within 12 hours, it had over 1,000 signatures. It currently has around 2,500 signatures, along with personal stories. Myself and all of these people believe losing Mr. Aylward would be detrimental to the students, the school, the band, and the community as a whole. Please listen to us, the ones who know and have been affected by him personally, instead of those who only know him as a baby and miss all on that basis.
Next, we have CJ Abney.
My name is CJ Abney. I'm a junior at the high school, and I'm gonna talk about how good Mr. Aylward is. Mr. Aylward has always gone out of his way to welcome every student, no matter their background or experience level. He has built a program where new people are accepted. Everyone has a place, and we are encouraged to grow, not only as musicians, but as people. Mr. A has been more than just a band director for me and for a lot of us. He's been a mentor, a supporter, a role model, and just felt more like family than just a teacher. Students consistently describe feeling seen, valued, and inspired under his leadership. For many of us, band has become a second home because of the band culture he created. The support... The support we've seen for him reflects that. Students, parents, and the community members are standing together and doing whatever we can for him because we know firsthand the positive difference he's made in our lives. That unity shows the kind of teacher and person Mr. Aylward is. Removing him would be so devastating. It would fracture a program that has been a safe space for so many students, especially those who struggle to find acceptance elsewhere. I joined concert band halfway through my freshman year. He made me feel accepted in the class and made the whole experience so enjoyable and the best thing I needed as a high school student. Now, I do every extracurricular band. I take multiple band classes during the day. That's because of the love for music, community, and experience Mr. Aylward has given me, and how his presence in the community cannot be replaced. Losing that sense of security at school could harm students' mental health, harm the community, and hurt the amazing band, family, and friends that have thrived in the positivity and comfortability of this big family. We respectfully urge decision-makers and everyone to consider the full picture of Mr. Aylward's contribution to Miami City High School and the lives of its students. His guidance has created an inclusive, thriving program that lifts up our whole community. We hope he is allowed to contribute. We hope he is allowed to continue doing the work that he has meant to so much to so many.
Crystal Bearcole. Not here. Kyle Kolorak. I'm so sorry if I'm not forgetting to use the correct.
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for letting me speak. I don't mean anything when I say this, but we started this by saying if you feel that you're going to echo somebody, refrain from speaking. I just want to point out that everyone in this room is an individual, and they have their own feelings and their own accounts, and I think that narrowing them down to echoes is not the right way to do it. I graduated 2025. When I started Myersburg's band, I was at a really low point in my life, and I ended up going to marching band, and I would walk around with my little MAGA shirt, my MAGA hat, whatever. And Elward would walk up to me, and he'd encourage me to be happy and to stay positive because he could see that in me, that I was struggling. Throughout the five years that I spent with Elward, he made me the best person I could have ever become. I went through a lot, and he encouraged me to get involved, to find my place in this world. And now I am in college for music education because of the amazing things that he did for me. If you're questioning the validity of Stephen Elward's teachings, I think that you should question your brain and what you're thinking about because that man is an incredible educator, and everyone in this room will tell you the same. Never once in my five years with him did he ever mention anything political in that classroom. Never once did he ever try to tell me that my beliefs were wrong or that anyone's beliefs were wrong. In fact, the only time he ever told me that I was wrong is when I said "Mango Number Five" was a good song. Stephen Elward is one of the most inspirational men I have ever met, and I hope that you guys look at that and take that into consideration. Regardless of if you're voting today, next week, or in a month, I think that everyone coming out here today and telling you how they feel is something that you should pay attention to and take into your hearts. Don't let it go into one ear and out the other because these people, they're not an echo chamber. These are lives, and these are people who have really important things to say. Once again, I appreciate you for letting us all speak up here. Thank you very much.
Gwendolyn Surgeon.
She yields.
Pass. Anthony Witt.
Pass.
Nikki Lee. Nikki Lee. Diane Pressle.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm speaking to show my undying support, Myersburg Band Director, Mr. Stephen Elward. I'm in my thirty-fifth year of teaching at Myersburg in Myersburg City Schools, on a lifetime resident, graduate of a high school, and a band parent. My multi-handicapped daughter Stephanie is a member of the marching band, wins a concert band. Since she's multi-handicapped, I go to every practice, pre-band camp, band camp, post-band camp, and all competitions with her to help her with anything she needs. I am there one hundred percent of the time she is there. I get the unique opportunity and honor to be behind the scenes to watch Mr. Elward in action. What I witness from Mr. Elward towards all of his students is respect, a positive environment for all, and nothing but a genuine love of teaching, his students, the band program, and the city of Myersburg. In fact, I have taken many of his teaching practices to my own classroom. My daughter Stephanie Journey, my daughter Stephanie, sorry, my daughter Stephanie Journey would not have been possible without the unwavering support of Mr. Elward. He sought Stephanie out and strongly encouraged her to be on the field. But Mr. Elward did not merely place Stephanie on the field. He provided her with a profound sense of belonging, meaningful interaction with her peers, and adapted the activities so Stephanie could succeed. Myersburg Marching Band was the first activity Stephanie participated in that did not include terms of adaptive or special in its title. She has formed friendships with band members who genuinely care about her, all because of Mr. Elward. Mr. Elward creates an inclusive learning musical environment for all students. Mr. Elward demonstrates a genuine respect and care for each individual in the band program. This care and respect fosters a positive experience for all students under his guidance. Mr. Elward's trust in his students extends to assigning them meaningful roles, fostering a sense of ownership in the program. Mr. Elward not only enriches musical education, but also provides a positive experience for all students. Mr. Elward is the type of educator that all students need. He truly believes in all of his students and gives them the confidence to shine beyond their limits. Thank you for your time.
Stephanie Pressle.
Hi, I'm Delipeno. I know Elward a lot helps me a lot in do. Elward helps me, Elward my people, they people go too. Thank you.
Roger Shibidecker.
Yeah, my name is Roger Shibidecker. In 2012, my youngest started at the high school, marching band and band. I got conned in to help him with pit and troughs. It was the best thing I ever could have done. Steve Elward, I went to him many a time, did an issue on props. He was always there. He was always there for the kids. Never did I ever hear him talk politics, even back then. He didn't talk in politics. He has done so much for these kids, so much for the school, so much for the community. And for one or two people on the internet to bash him, it's wrong. I feel you guys will come to the right decision so we can protect Steve Elward because he is an asset to the kids, the school, and the community. Thank you.
Patricia Alcorn.
Hello, my name is Patricia Alcorn. To Mr. Black of the administration, Myersburg Board of Education, and all other teachers and students to whom it be concerned, there is an issue that has been affecting the minds of staffs and students at MHS. Things have been happening in the building online that are unacceptable and need to be addressed. Two of our staff members so far have been ostracized for their personal beliefs online and by the very administration meant to preserve their safety. Many of our fellow students feel concerned about whether MHS will make a safe space for learning while dismissing the situation as harmless joke. The school, DSU, and students and teachers are at risk. Gun violence is a real threat and something that we need to fight altogether. We shouldn't penalize our staff and students for expressing their beliefs. Clubs shouldn't be dismantled as a result of things uncontrollable to the students involved, and students shouldn't be suspended for expressing their emotions and opinions in such a trivial time. We need our administration to fight for us, the staff, students, and most importantly, our safety. And the staff code of conduct policy 3310 is based that teachers are allowed to exercise their freedom of speech in non-instructional settings. Along with that, in the student handbook for the 2025 to 2026 school year, stated under the Students' Rights section, it is said that students are permitted to have their own opinions and express themselves appropriately in the classroom. If the disciplinary actions chosen are to terminate or punish those who exercise these rights in the code of conduct, then it would be hypocrisy and unfair to those individuals. While it's possible to receive disciplinary action if a teacher or student decides to publicly express their opinion on the district's beliefs negatively, there is no section saying that it is wrong for them to express their opinions on political matters as long as it is respectful in manner. Our administration needs to do better. The safety and welfare of our staff members and students are in question because of the online discourse regarding MHS. Threats have been sent to the school and towards families regarding the situation, and that is not something we can be ignorant towards. Resources have been implemented to protect the community of MHS. This is a plea from the students. Our words must be heard. For if adults cannot speak up for us, then it is our place to speak for them using our First Amendment. Thank you for your time and consideration.
The thirty minutes is now up for public comment.
Steve, sir, I wrote to each of the board members here.
We've received all emails that everybody has wrote. We have been reading them. As I stated at the beginning, we've done our best to respond, and there's been such an influx and we've not been able to respond. Please know that everybody up here has received the emails that have been sent. At this time, we're going to move on from public comment. At this time, we're going to move on from public comment.
With all due respect, you have an elected official here in the corner, and I think you should give him that opportunity to speak.
It doesn't matter.
Your state representative, it doesn't matter.
I understand that, but I would just like to follow board policy. Right now, our board policy states that we have thirty minutes for public comment.
That is for a normal board meeting. I think everyone in this room will agree with me that this is not a normal board meeting.
Sir, will you please sit down?
And I ask that you extend that thirty minute period. I ask each of you to do so. Please take that under further consideration based upon the comments from this crowd.
At this time, board discussion is over.
Ever before, have you?
We will move on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve consent items A through F?
I hope not.
Sir, I would politely ask you to sit down.
These students deserve to be heard by the board.
Hey, hey, I have, at this point, we do not need any disruption of the meeting at hand.
Yet you allow minors to come up here and speak.
Sir, please, can you please have a seat? At this time, unfortunately, we have a board policy of the thirty minutes. The way that we took the statements was the way they came in, so. Comments were then coming in for green sheets since nine fifteen. I apologize.
I promise you I'm.
We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F?
Many of you are near my age.
You can turn to Michael.
We did not allow minors.
Do. Sir, I'm going to ask you to sit down, please.
Will you like to ask a doubt, sir?
Or will you please remove yourself from the podium?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Goodbye, Karen.
I'm going to move on with the agenda. As the board policy says, we have thirty minutes of comment. Do I have a motion to approve consent items A through F?
Second.
All right, consent agenda items. First would be approval of overnight extended student trip stay. This is the recommendation of the Board of Education to follow the overnight extended student stay. This is for Myersburg High School Chair going to Orlando. Item B, approval of out-of-state travel and overnight student trips. This is the same motion for the same event. Item C, approval of non-residential eligibility for tuition-free education. This is recommended by the superintendent of the Board of Education, approved Risa Costa, tuition-free enrollment, twenty-five, twenty-six school year for board policy 511. D is approval of tuition rate, twenty-twenty-five school year. E is approval of twenty-twenty-six early graduation, recommended by Michael Black. Item F, approval of superintendent's agreement of free attendance. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Rocco?
Mr. Ampler? Yes. Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Nease?
Next, we're moving on to the human resources items. Item A, do I have a motion?
Mr. Dapler, we now have the board discussion.
Oh, I apologize. Did I miss something there? Yeah, go ahead, board discussion, Ms. Stacy. I apologize.
Terribly sorry, you feel so.
I would like to double up the floor for board discussion regarding committee assignments. There's been some conversation about the school board meets regularly, obviously, but oftentimes there are committees formed among school board members to continue having conversations on a regular basis specific to a certain topic or area.
Yes, one of the first committees that I would like to, I guess, rejuvenate would be the recreation of a finance committee. I'd like to get two members of the board that have interest in financial matters or experience and such. Ultimately, we could bring in some members of the community as well to serve on that. And again, it would be a guiding board that would ultimately review things that would ultimately end up before the board for a full vote for various things. You know, most recently, we've had a couple of high-dollar expenditures that were questioned in the competitive nature of those types of things. That would be the typical type of subjects that we would undertake with the finance committee.
Do you have a discussion on any other committee?
I already volunteered. Do I need to volunteer again?
Duly noted, sir. Yes, again, in order to avoid any sunshine law violations, we can only have up to two. Certainly, if we only have one, that's fine, but the more the merrier.
I'll do it since I've taken the whole day training at the LSA about our funding to teach, I'm going to do it.
Ms. Maney, did you have any other?
I did have a question. Is there anything wrong with, you know, having this finance committee meet publicly so the community can be engaged in the financial decisions of the district?
No, but again, usually it's more of, again, because we're reviewing things that ultimately are just under consideration, they're not actually being put to a vote. Any recommendations by the finance committee ultimately has to come before the full board and ultimately would be too available to the public purview, so.
So it's more of a workshop focused on specific areas?
Correct. Again, this is more of a roll up your sleeves and get into the, really into the weeds on financial matters that impact the district. And again, And again, mostly strategic items, not necessarily getting into the day-to-day minutia, but really looking at more strategic spending.
Thanks for letting me know what you volunteered me for.
You're welcome.
Would this be something that Steve would be involved with as well as?
Yes, absolutely. As the HR and business manager, he would have an integral part of that as well as Superintendent Maney.
If anybody else around to do it, I would not doing it.
Well, I appreciate the two of you volunteering, and I'll be calling a meeting here too soon. Speed start. Thank you.
All right, now we will move on to Human Resources items, since I skipped over the discussion. My apologies. Human Resources item A, do I have a motion? Personal reports certificate.
I move for the approval of personal reports certificate.
I second.
First by Chris, second by Jason.
Mr. Humming, are there any personal conflicts of the board in any of the Human Resources agenda items this evening?
I didn't see any when I looked.
There is, I think.
Yeah, there is one firsthand.
It looks like C for supplemental stipend, and D supplemental stipend, and C supplemental stipend. I think Regina has them marked if there is a conflict in the. Do we have them pertaining to me? I do not think so. Regina's on crack. No, they do not. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Item C, do I have a motion to approve personal reports classified, item D?
So moved.
Second.
First by Jason, second by Nile. Roll call.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Item C, do I have a motion to approve personal reports supplemental stipend certificated and classified, Part One?
So moved.
First by Jason, second by Chris. Roll call. Do you have technical difficulties?
Um, just making sure before I go start voting here, I didn't think there was anything that was actually involved, but just wanted to make sure before. Okay, I'm good. Everybody okay? Site manager was only increased, looked like it was seventy-five, looks like, maybe I'm going way back to when I was, been here for twelve years.
It depends if they're in-house or if we're renting them out and they're subcharged for this.
Like for site managers, like at the middle school or whatever, there's seventy-five.
Yes, they used to be sixteen-five, yes, correct.
I just wanted to make sure. I'm good.
Roll call.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Item D, do I have a motion to approve personal reports supplemental stipend certificated classified, Part Two?
I move to approve the personnel report supplemental stipend, Part Two.
First by Nina, second by Chris. Roll call.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Abstain.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Item D, do I have a motion to approve personal reports supplemental stipend certificated classified, Part Three?
So moved.
First by Nile.
Second.
Second by Jason. Roll call.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Abstain.
We are going to move on to agreements and contracts. Do I have a motion to approve agreements and contracts, items A through C?
So moved.
Second.
First by Jason, second by Nile. Item A, approval memorandum and understanding with preschool promise. Comments, this is the ongoing preschool that we have with the private entities. Approval memorandum and understanding of DHWC.
I have a question about that. Is that actually a staff member, Mrs. Neese?
I think Miss Lucas is not.
Or is it more of a, yeah, is it more of a, is it a staff member or the?
The local Adams High School Board or H.
The Adams Board.
Yeah, the Adams. Oh, yeah, so is that like a grant to, is that a grant? It says it was a grant. Project aware grant. Yeah, identified funding for training the DHW coordinator position, you know, the project aware. Yeah, I believe this may change of the system that we're already having in place. Discontinuation, okay, that's what I thought, I thought we had done this before.
Roll call.
Yes.
Oh, approval of agreements with Warren County Educational Service. This looks to be probably a student, a student placement, student that needs help that we can't provide. Now may I have roll call.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappler?
Yep.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next, Financial Agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve items A through B?
I move that we approve items A through B.
So moved.
First by Nile, second by Jason. Mr. Wells?
Um, yeah, just with the advent of the acceleration by STRS to move retirement for retirement benefits up to thirty-two years of service, in last May, we've seen a shift forward of retirements. Again, good for our teachers that are eligible. Congratulations to them. Unfortunately, though, that also puts us in a position where the severance payments have accelerated as well, and so because of that, then we have to move up, we have to increase our transfers to the O thirty-five severance account to be able to cover all those obligations. And then, of course, there's the monthly updates on appropriations and estimated resources.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next, we've got the favorite part of the meeting, acceptance of donations. We have a thousand dollars, we have a motion to accept donations first.
So moved.
Should we, did we talk about that amendment to the permanent appropriations of certificate of estimated resources?
She did.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Good?
Yep, I'm good.
Did we have a?
We have a motion on the floor for the acceptance of donations. I need a second, please.
My second.
Thank you.
Jason was first.
Yep.
We have a thousand dollars from the Getter family to split between the following Miami River cross-school groups, bowling, tennis, golf, cross-country inquire, five hundred from Catherine Cook, up to nutrition services for the purpose of paying off Miami River Middle School lunch accounts, fifteen thousand from the Miami River Alumni Association from the golf outing. Roll call.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
We will move on to reports. Ms. Molly Williams.
Good evening. Nice to see everybody. The Miami WCC board met on September the ninth. Dr. Wellings reported to four two thousand one hundred and thirty-four students on campus, and that the school year had settled into a rhythm, so it's nice to see everybody's moving and grooming for the year. There was a couple of full-time, one full-time new hire and many part-time new hires who are still trying to find bus drivers and things like that in, at CTC as well, so we have just a couple of those. In student news, Ashley Bailey placed gold in the FCC LA, which is the National Leadership Conference in Orlando, Florida. FCC LA means Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. This youth organization is focused on early education, childhood, culinary arts, and hospitality services. The great thing is they focus on skills for life, such as character development, creative and critical thinking, interpersonal communication in practical moments, and career path. So she did a great job there, and we'll tell that she's from Miami River. Several of the satellite programs were highlighted in the morning announcements from Miami River were actually shown at the board meeting at CTC, and I know these were mailed out to all of you as well. So this is a brand-new program at the junior high, and it's spent a lot of fun for the students to start doing the announcements and getting to know all the teachers who are doing interviews. And thank you to Stacy for sending that out. So the satellite programs that are developing and coming into the schools, not just Miami River, but across Montgomery County, are really important because the CTC campus is already built, and they've only been in the UCC for a year and a half. So this is a great way to reach out to students all across Montgomery County and show them what CTC has to offer, give them exposure to new and current career paths, and just to help them to reach more students. So I'm excited that Miami River is taking advantage of these programs and doing that in our schools. So, thank you, that's all I have tonight, and just hit the feedback.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to legislative zone. Jason Maury.
Thank you, Mr. Dappler. I'm going to do something a little bit different tonight, got a couple of special guests I'm going to introduce here in a minute to address our board and our community. The tragic events of the past few weeks for across our nation have gotten everyone's attention in a huge way regarding one important fact. We have a very serious problem in a lot of areas around violence. Just yesterday, three Pennsylvania state troopers were murdered and two others shot responding to an incident to protect their communities. Students were shot in schools in Colorado and Minnesota by unhinged lunatics, some of those kids while they were attending a church service in school. We witnessed a beautiful young woman get ambushed from behind on a train in North Carolina, get stabbed three times in the neck by a career criminal with a rap sheet a mile long, and then left to bleed there alone, getting no attention from anyone around her. A man in Dallas, Texas was beheaded by another lunatic who wasn't even a citizen of our country. Charlie Kirk, a man who was hated for speaking freely about his love for Jesus Christ and pride in his nation, was assassinated in front of his wife and young child, and in the aftermath, his family had to endure people celebrating his death for partisan gain or indoctrinating verbal children while they're in school. All these things are just horrible. There's no other words to describe them, and I believe as Americans in times like these, you know, prayer is very important. So if you would join me in a moment of silent prayer and reflection, not just for the people I mentioned, but for every American that has been affected by such senseless acts of Thank you all. As we all emerged from these recent tragedies, every single one of us has been changed by them forever. Our board's principal role and most serious responsibility is to ensure the safety and well-being of our staff and students. We take that role incredibly seriously. When everyone seeks employment within a school district, with that choice of career accompanies an immense responsibility to care for someone's most precious commodity, their child. This board approves rules and policies and has them in place to guarantee a level of safety, and we employ qualified professionals to enforce those rules on our board's behalf. I have received several letters of concern from State Representative Roddy Creach and West Carrollton City Councilman Rick Dobson, who couldn't be here tonight because of prior engagements. Those letters have been scanned into the record of this evening's meeting for the public to review within a meeting minutes at their convenience on the Board Doc's website. At this time, I would like to invite State Representatives Tom Young and State Representative Phil Plummer to the podium to offer some insight to our community about how these current issues, through a lens of lifelong residents and leader in our region, and someone with thirty years' experience at the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, ten years as a Montgomery County Sheriff, and now four terms as State Representative in the High State House.
Your three minutes is up. Boom. Choke on it. Is this all your time? Is anybody want to hear this bullshit?
Can we please respect the person at the podium?
Nobody does. It's not on the agenda. Not on your agenda. Carry on. We're going to cover a couple of policies that pertain to the school systems. We're with you guys a hundred percent, you know, we love our public schools. My four years or my four terms in the House have advocated for more funding for you guys because we need to educate our kids. And people in the audience, you guys have a great community here. Charlie Kirk died doing what we're doing here. We have differences, but we need to speak about them. We need to talk about the differences. Because when you don't, it leads to violence. So you guys have a great bedroom community here. Let's respect each other, and let's talk about these issues. You know, these are tough. That's all you got? He's a Nazi. You're all Nazis. Why don't you be respectful? I don't know where you grew up at, but you need to be respectful. Hey, sweetheart, I'm not your daughter. They don't get to tell me.
This is the legislative report.
You're fucking Nazi. Let's call you what you are. You're on the wrong side of history. Okay. Wrong side of history. Teach your kids. Please educate your kids. All right, you guys, let our legislative representative speak. What about the students who go to school here? Why didn't you let them finish speaking? Yeah, this is.
At this point, we do not need any further comment from the audience. We'd like to let the legislator speak.
Why is it not on your agenda?
This is the legislative report. These are two representatives.
That are Republican, that only represent parts. They don't represent everyone here.
Thank you. Please continue.
They don't represent most of the people here. Moving on with our legislative update, you know, overall for you guys, you're doing a great job here, you have great communities. Couple important bills you guys need to be aware of is, we're working on the hemp issue where our kids are smoking baby intoxicated hemp in our bathrooms. Coach Russ in Oakdale, we see that, that's a very important issue for you guys. Like I said, we funded you by four general assemblies, and we'll continue to fund you guys for the nonsense that's going on in our communities. I have a very important bill that if you kill a first responder, a police officer, a firefighter, a military person, you're going to go to prison for life and be eligible for the death penalty. We're tired of you killing our first responders and military personnel. That line's drawn in the sand. That bill will be passed soon. Yes, thank you. Thank you, guys, for what you guys do and have to put up with this nonsense. But we need to get back and be a community and start treating each other like adults. I have Tom Young here with me. We work on a lot of bills together. Like I said, we appreciate what you guys do, and it's tough. You know, as a sheriff, I've had to do a lot of disciplinary actions. Words matter. I've had to terminate deputies for words and text messages off-duty on their own equipment. So words matter. When you're a public employee and being paid by taxpayers, you're held to a higher standard. Absolutely. I fired people for that. I disciplined people for that, so I'm going to leave you guys in my card because I have some history there. And if you need to run anything by me, please do so, because, you know, people are assuming the outcome may be termination, it may not. We appreciate you guys coming here respectfully, voicing your opinions. That's what these guys need. You guys elected these people to make these decisions. So thank you for coming out. Thank you for most of you being very respectful up here speaking. The other of you grow up, but here's my guards. You guys hang in there. We have your backs. You know, violence has to stop, but for the liberals in this room, the bullets seem to be flying in one direction. And the other side. Get out of here. You Nazi, Nazi racist. And the other side.
Get out of here. You Nazi, Nazi racist. Get out of here. Fascist. Get out of here. Get out of here fascist.
Unnecessary polarization.
Get out of here. Fanatic.
A man who spent a lot of money just to give them their car, but they vote here, the students.
Yeah, fuck him.
We don't need national politics in the school board.
Yeah, this is bullshit. Why is this up here? There is nothing to do with politics here. This is about the kids. Not some piece of shit. Not this piece of shit. Hi sweetheart.
How about if you get nonpartisan? Have some.
No. Just guys. Sit down.
At this, at this point, we're treating people. Hey, we're, please be quiet. If we cannot contain ourselves and our emotions, we are going to adjourn. Please.
I would like a good idea. Please do.
Let me address some legislation we have. First of all, one of the major issues we have that has been brought forth and welcomed through superintendent Mayne is unfounded mandates. We hear that across the board, across Ohio. And we submitted recommendations from the superintendent, we do it quarterly, at least three times a year. And there's a list of 52. And we had this, and there'll be legislation coming from President of the House, President President Laura Mayne, to address all these issues. If you want to get with Shannon Cox, there is a list of 52. If you go through those and you feel that there are some that are missing, please get them to us as soon as possible. That'd be helpful. The other thing is, you'll see that there were students, we have an advisory board through the ESC, and students have come forward with a request, a bill that I'm sponsoring, to allow if you don't play football, or run track, or have an approved sport in school, you have to take the gym credit. So I have legislation that will allow students who are dancers, or gymnasts, or swimmers, or hockey players, across the board, there are parameters that you have to qualify for. To, if it qualifies based upon what the board says, and it meets those standards, then they will not be required to take the gym credit. On top of that, my son, I have a young son, and he is used to having recess. And we're finding that in the classroom, there's a lot of pent-up energy and, and the kid's got to get out. So this bill will also mandate two recess periods throughout the school. We'll take on those challenges. I've met with some athletic directors and gym teachers, or phys ed teachers, sorry about that, about this, and they have some opinions about it too, and we will listen to them, but we feel this is a very important step. One of the biggest challenges we have going forward, the study says by 2030, half the globe's population will be obese. And there's a movement at the federal level and Jim Trussell's effort at the state level, Lieutenant Governor, to start these exercise programs, which we had when I was growing up. And it's very, very important that we get our kids healthy. The other thing is, we have College Credit Plus initiative to improve that and work with the schools on that issue. One of the primary points is that who's going to pay for the books? I mean, that's always been a challenge that we've had. And we're going to work on that. It's, it's not out of committee yet, but we'll see what happens there. But I think one of the main things is, I'm the chair of higher education workforce, and what we're trying to do is create pathways. And you've heard this through the ESC, so we have, so we can accelerate the degree, whether it's a two-year degree, a certificate, or a four-year degree. So by the time the student gets to a junior or senior in high school, there's already a pathway, whether they want to be a nurse, advanced manufacturing, or whatever, they will be able to take their first year of college in high school, and all those credits will count. Right now, we have a system where they take and get an associate's degree from Sinclair College Credit Plus. They go to college, and only 10 of those credits count towards their degree. And so that's not expensive for families, students, debt, and it takes them four or five years to finish their degree. So these accelerated programs will hopefully limit the four-year degree to three, the two-year degree to possibly one. And we have universities that have embraced this, we're with the Higher Learning Commission. I'll be with the Secretary McMahon next Wednesday to discuss all these things, try to get them in policy at the federal level to expedite these, these degree programs through higher ed. And it'll be, it'll be a plus for Ohio because the challenge we have is we don't have enough people in the workforce, right? We don't have enough educated people, enough trained people, and we don't have enough opportunities for young people to have internships and co-ops. And that's really the true focus of this. Lastly, you've got the report cards. I will tell you the things I focus on that I've discussed with many board members in my district and in the state of Ohio is improvement. Where are we, where are we improving? It's not so much the, that outcome of graduation and so on and so forth, but where were we and where are we now? With the science of reading implementation, which some school districts embraced early and got the curriculum started, we've seen an improvement that quickly. And so this year will be the full phase of the science of reading. And for those who don't know much about this, it's one standard of reading that we're using across Ohio, and we're, we are educating college students, teachers, to teach all the same, the same curriculum in the classroom. Go back and look up on the internet, the Mississippi miracle. We had the poorest state and the most illiterate state in the country adopt this method. It was the same thing that I grew up with, and we got away from it. So our students are being, my children were educated on five different English programs, reading programs. Now there'll be one. And it will be fully implemented this year. Mississippi was 50th in literacy. After six years, they were number one, were 26th. In the city of Cleveland alone, and we talked about crime, violence, and all these, they tie in together. Most of these young people are illiterate, right? They can't read, they can't do math. But 66% of the population of the city of Cleveland are functionally illiterate. And that, we have to stop that generational delatorcy. It will make a difference. And we hope that this accelerates to create a workforce and to create an educated workforce and trained workforce, because that's what's going to attract business and industry to Ohio and, and take on the challenges we have in society with violence and so on and so forth. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take this.
May I ask a question, sir?
Yes, that okay?
Yeah, fine.
Sure.
Some of us here may not understand what free speech is. Many things are protected under the freedom of speech by the Constitution. However, not all free, all speech is free speech.
It's all free.
For example, if I go to a theater, a crowded theater, and shout "fire," that is not free speech.
At this point, we're going to, I was hoping that that would be.
I was hoping to be agreeing too.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we need to move on to this.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what I will do, because I felt badly to participate in public comments. I'll stick around after the meeting, talk to you as long as you want.
I have a topic we need to do one more thing. We were just talking about, would you please have an open vote? Over whether or not you should have extended, or that you could extend, more than 30 minutes to this Mars group that thinks it's the most important board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
I appreciate your, I appreciate you giving us an update. And this is our state representative, that is why he's at the mic, Phil Plummer is the state representative. They have, you know, they are the legislators, that is, this is the report, that is why they get to talk. So.
Well, thanks for having me here. Thank you, sir.
I have a question about what you spoke about. Can I ask the representative a question about what you were just speaking about? So I agree that it's very.
Yeah.
It is, I agree it's very important how our, our students are taught. That is very critical. But what's also important is the underlying causes of lower education, which also often has to do with racism and poverty. And what do you have to adjust to address that? Because kids that come to school hungry, they're not learning. It doesn't matter what style of teaching you're using.
Right. They took their free lunch.
Well, the, the, at the federal level, there have been issues with how to do the SNAP program and things like that. I'm sure you're familiar with that.
Which just was greatly defunded.
Yeah. And so.
So more kids will have no food.
But that's the federal level. I will tell you, at the state level, we have the food banks, we have funded to the tune of excess of $100 million. We support them immensely. We have coordinated programs with churches, private organizations, and it's a full-court press to be able to make sure that that happens. One of the largest program, problems we have now that we're trying to face, and I don't know if we can solve it or not, some people say we can't, but I don't know what, what the answers are, and history will, will prove whether we can or not. And that's the homelessness, homelessness issue of young people and people who have no place to go. We can accommodate them during winter and summer, in meeting with the many organizations. But the, when I ask them, can we solve it? They say, I don't know if we can or not. So those are the two key issues, and I appreciate your comment.
So there's a lot of we though. So what are you doing? What is one thing you're doing this year?
Okay, I think we, we.
I, I said.
Mr. Young, thank you. Thank you so much.
Why the hell are you asking questions? Why can't everybody?
We allowed one question without another. I actually interrupted the man that was speaking, so we will move on to the student's achievement. Mr. Christopher Amsler.
On the student achievement, we haven't been in school long enough. I'm assuming in October, we'll do the September and October students. So at this time, I do not have a report.
Thank you. Do we have a drug-free coalition report, Ms. Gatter?
We do. We do today. The Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition met. We had a very good meeting today. There was a report on the back-to-school bash that they had in August. We gave away 300 backpacks and lunchboxes, and also had food and treats for the children. It was very successful. The first, one of the first that they've done. We also have the ongoing poster and poetry contest that's upcoming, and there's big prizes for the winner. What will happen with that is Drug Free Coalition will send me the criteria for that. I will send that to Superintendent Mayne, and the superintendent, the district, just that to the, the schools. And it's our hope that we have lots of applications for that, because that gives our school, you know, good publicity in the district, not only the district, but the whole city of Dayton area. And it's also good for our kids. We also had a testimony by a young man. It was very touching. And he emphasized that having good parents and being raised by two parents doesn't exclude a person from falling into drug and/or alcohol addiction. He started drinking at age 15 and progressed to marijuana, cocaine, and opiates. He is now four years sober after entering recovery. So it was, it was very, very touching. And it just so happens that the young man was from this area. So that made it even more meaningful to me and for him to be able to share that. We also talked about one of the areas for recovery that is new. It's called Recovery Defined. They now have outpatient treatment center for adults, men and women, and youth in both Dayton and Middletown. They shared that we have 636 people in custody in the Montgomery County Jail, and this was just devastating. Half of those are on meds for mental health. So we need to also stay focused on that. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Gatter. Along with Chris, I do not have a district news or information. I would like to get the appetite of the board here to see if we would like to have roundtable comments. I think we've talked enough.
They're not making noise.
If, yeah. Do we, do we want to have the roundtable or not? That's kind of my question.
Yes.
Will you? Okay, Ms. Molly.
So I just wanted to say that I do have my Miami'sburg Nobody Fights Alone shirt on tonight, and I just want to wear this because I think this is so important to our community to show. There's a young lady that works in Medlarview. She is a mom and of two little kids. She is a wife, and she is battling cancer. And it's so wonderful to me to see the community reach out and provide food and help with school and help with their childrens, and raise funds for their family to help pay for all of her medical expenses and everything by supporting her with either simply wearing a T-shirt or doing a GoFundMe or anything. I'm so proud of our community, and I just want to say that there are so many good things here. And I just want us to keep focused on the best parts of Miami'sburg and don't let somebody else deter from them. So thank you and have a good weekend.
Does she have a good foundation?
I can have some of that. But I can look.
Yeah, if you let us know what we can do to support that, we'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
I just want to start by thanking everyone for coming out this evening to be heard. I want to share a quick story with you, I'll be very brief, but part of the reason why I'm sitting in this seat today is I attended a board meeting for the first time, and I didn't follow the rules, and I didn't turn into green form, and I sat there for two and a half hours through a board meeting and was denied to speak. So that inspired me to sit here. So, and if you look at where the public comments are, they're not more forward in the meeting, which I felt like that's a respect for people that want to come, have their voices be heard in normal circumstances, and then be able to go home. And I don't want to dwell on that though, but I did want to share that, that I'm a huge supporter of everybody's voice being heard, whether we agree with their, what they say or not.
Thank you.
Second thing I want to do is, you know, I want to thank our board and our administration staff. The last few days have been a lot. It's been incredibly challenging on everybody, and I want to thank you for your continuing and ongoing effort. The collaboration has been great, and it's much appreciated. I also want to thank Chief Bremner, Miami'sburg Police Department. Your help over the last couple of days has been awesome too. I know in this climate, my family has had some concerns that you've helped put their mind at ease, and they very much appreciate that. So that's all I have for the evening.
I'd like to thank the custodians. I'm amazed at the cleanliness of our classrooms and hallways when I visit our schools. If you don't have an opportunity to do that, when you drop your kids off and you can take them to the classroom, and you can see, everything's sparkling, every, every school that I visit. Also, I'd like to, I'd like to just make a comment about what Representative Young said about the advisory student board. If you don't understand that, we have four students that serve on our school board as student board members. They don't vote, but they, they're chosen and vetted through a very difficult process. And last year, the two that attend, we have a regional student board that includes student board reps from other schools, and they did a letter-writing campaign to the state representatives about the gym credit. So that's where that came from. So you should be very, very proud of our student representatives. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and students, I really think you're very brave to speak and keep speaking your voice. The custodians, I want to thank them. I've been in other districts. Our district is the cleanest I've ever seen. Also, I want to thank the band for their coloring, all the band awards that they won on Saturday. That was amazing. And then to have good luck in Toledo, I think this Saturday, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And then, yeah, our board reps and myself and Ms. Gatter will meet with the roundtable, where we meet with board members and for student board reps from other districts. And we've been doing this for a year now, and they get to choose what kind of legislation they would like to write. So that's exciting. And one other thing, I was invited to a poverty experience today at the silos. I don't know if any of you have been to the silos downtown Dayton. I got to sit at tables individually with persons that
I got to sit at tables individually with persons that have been in gangs, they've been incarcerated, they've been suicidal, and it was the most interesting thing. And the main thing was how support systems changed their lives around, and I just wanted to share that.
I wanted to say a couple of things that I normally don't do after public comments, but I think in light of the situation and with everything that's being said, first of all, I want to say thank you for coming tonight. Secondly, as I've been here for 12 years, I know that the band community thinks very highly of Steve. I've been here, I know what Steve means to our band. I know what Steve means to our students, and I know what Steve means to our community. One of the things, and I graduated here in 1985, and I can tell you for a fact, one of the things that we've always been known for, and have continued to be known for, is our band, because it is the damn best land band in the land inside the highest state. But I will say, I will say this, and if she's in the audience tonight, you need to give her another round of applause, because I think what Brooklyn Miller said tonight was fantastic. I think she did a nice job. I thought that she was on point, and I thought that she was precise. We hear you. We know you want to talk. We also know that we have a policy of 30 minutes. But it's not that your comments, or your emails, or your phone calls are going unnoticed or not taken into account. We were here for three and a half hours last night discussing this. So if you don't think that this is on our radar screen, that we want to get this right, we are taking this into consideration, and we know how much our teachers and our students mean to the school system. And I just want that to be known, that each one of us came on this board for students, and for the community, and for our staff. And that has never changed in the 12 years that I've been here, and hopefully it doesn't change whenever I leave. So each one of us have a interest, and each one of us know what our interests are, and that's what makes our board unique, because we can go to each individual and say, hey, I don't understand this point, but, but can you explain it a little bit better? Now we have a new superintendent, we have a new treasurer, and we still have Steve Holman. So I think we're doing pretty good, but I just want to let you know that we do hear you, and we know that you're frustrated that not everybody got to talk. But it goes to show that you wanted to talk because we ran out of time for the green sheets. That's not a bad thing. That is a good thing. If you wanted to talk and didn't get your opportunity to talk, hopefully, one of the individuals that did, and I can tell you right now, Brooklyn did a heck of a job. So congratulations to her. Thank you.
I would also like to thank everyone for attending this evening and participating, and I'd like to say that participation in the school district is always welcomed and is always encouraged. So thank you for participating. Additionally, though, I'd like to challenge everyone that's been able to prioritize our school district and carve time out of your busy lives and schedules to come and voice your opinions and spend time pouring into our district during a time of discourse, to equally, hopefully, prioritize our district when we get back on track in a time of unity, in a time of celebration, and a time to wrap our arms around our students, and refocus on the achievement of our students and the growth of our students. So I appreciate seeing you all here, and would always appreciate seeing as many people and having as much communication as you are willing to give. So thank you. I would also like to second National Custodian Day, or third. Our buildings are, do look amazing, and they do a fantastic job, and actually are just fantastic people, so it's been really wonderful to meet them in my, in my new position. So congratulations, and we will be recognizing them on October 2nd, as well as every other day of the year as well. If you're interested, I was a guest on a podcast for the Ohio Leadership Advisory Council, also called OLAC. They have a podcast, OLAC at the Table. I was featured on, asked to speak on an episode regarding data-driven leadership in education, so if you're online and want to catch that podcast, on their website, Spotify, Amazon, wherever you catch your podcasts, you can listen to what I've had to say about data-driven leadership. And I'm also enjoying joining our local Rotary, so community participation has very, has been very exciting for me recently to step into that route as well locally. And finally, Homecoming Week is upon us, so next week, we have our Homecoming Parade in the community on Thursday evening, the 25th, and the game against an unknown team that won't be named on the 26th. So I also look forward to seeing all of the community at the parade and our Homecoming events, and it's just a really special time of year for our students, and I think a time we probably all remember as, as students ourselves. So thank you all.
All righty, I will keep this relatively brief. I do also want to thank everybody that came. Once again, I echo those feelings of having the support. I mean, I know this is the subject at hand, and we've got a lot of support in that community. It would be great if we could focus that around everything, everybody, all the time. Thank you, representatives, to show up and speak at the Legislative Park. Thank you, Miami's for Police Department. Thank you, custodians. And I hope everybody has a fantastic weekend. Thank you.
I just want to say, I'm willing to hang out for a little bit if anybody has something they'd like to share, you know, that didn't get to speak. Just wanted to put that out there.
I'll go back to the speaking part, the 12 years that Chris is here. I was actually the one that told Mr. Mallory when he was there that he didn't fill out a green sheet correctly. And...
It's all your fault.
Here we are. So, and that's fine. I find that we would have set a precedent to people that will be beyond me at another time, that they would have to deal with, maybe handling something that could be three or four hours. Me personally, I don't want to set that precedent. That's kind of the stance I took, if you want the insight in why I stuck to the 30-minute rule. So thank you, everybody, for your participation. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I ask a question about your procedure? Is there a mechanism in place for people to submit their comments if they signed up to speak in a timely manner?
Well, yeah, there was comments that were sent in on the 15th and the 16th. I just read them in order, at our website, it's at our... Yeah, there's, I think you can get on our school website, there's a green sheet form there, if you submit it. I read them in the order they came in. I think that is typically how we do them.
What I'm asking is, if they did sign up and they did not get a chance to speak, is there a way that they can submit their comments to the board to be included in the record?
Absolutely. Please, just send them to the MCS School Board email or education email on the website. So...
Corey.
Do I have a... I'll stay after as well, if people want to talk. I would like to adjourn the meeting, and we can, we can have conversation afterwards.
I move to adjourn.
Real cool.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Baffler?
Yes.
Ms. Gatter?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Ms. Denise?
Yes.
The director reflects 7:39, adjourned.